All right, we are back from our closed session. We will move on to the next item. Which is number nine approving previous meeting minutes and that's from seven one of two thousand and twenty four. If there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by council member Hubbard.
Second.
Second by council member. Again, this is approving previous meeting minutes from seven to one twenty four. During none, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, moves to item ten. This is consent. These are all items that need our approval. But not necessarily a conversation, but any and all are open for conversation. If anyone has a question.
I just had a comment. I was like, I was excited to see the ice arena piece of that. I know we've had different conversations with revenue options. I think that's a good option, a very common option to have. Advertising on the breaker boards.
Yeah.
The terminology left me as I started to say it.
Yeah.
Dashboard.
Dashboard. Thank you. Thank you. Tell I was not a hockey person. That's where I just, that was good to see. I read through that. It was kind of interesting to see how that plays out. But that was, I know we've had conversations for a while.
That's another one we've been talking about for a long time, so.
Yep. Actually, out of curiosity, would that ever lead to, I know obviously that maybe a little bit based on the name of the company ringside. Is dashboard boards, but also you think about like baseball field fences in the outfield.
It could.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, all those things got to be tactfully done. Otherwise, it can not look great. But okay, I was just curious because you see those similarly in hockey arenas, you see in baseball softball fields.
Yeah, I had emailed Marshall and Matt with just a few questions and Marshall had responded back to me that the price. This, you know, the prices that are listed were for the dashboard. They were outside of the printing of it. But the seventy percent of the net cost was language pertaining to other advertising opportunities within such as scoreboard. In ice logos and bony rap, et cetera. They're not pursuing them at that point, but there are additional opportunities as far as that goes. So that's just a nice point of clarification. I think that was good to pass along, so.
Yeah.
Anyone else got anything else? Entertainer, entertain a motion to approve consent.
Motion to prove consent.
Motion by council member Gra. Second by wind shuttle. Discussion on consent.
I just had one discussion. I'm sorry. Actually, this was also on consent. It's the final for the Hazelton Villas. And one of the questions I had asked was, you know, eleven P M. For the lights to turn off. I was wondering, you know, why it wasn't more in line with our park time being ten P M.
I think one of the things looking at this is looking at more like a commercial property that we have lights on in the properties there surrounding there. Our requirements in the city ordinance is make sure that the light. Candles, is that right? Or don't actually go out into surrounding properties. But if you think about like the apartments that are going in, they have the very same streetlights that are on the other side of their apartment as well. And we have the same requirements there where they can be on, but they have to show down so they can't show up.
All right.
Good question.
All right, anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve consent. All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Action items eleven A adopt resolution two thousand and twenty four dash sixty two approving preliminary site and building plan. For the performance center at Hazelton National Golf Course.
Aaron Council, this is one that you have seen previously in relation to the area that's around the villas that we had just spoke about. It's going a little bit different pace, but similar where Hazelton is looking at putting in a basically a training center. For people at the club and people staying in the villas there. So I'll turn it over to Liz who's going to present this. This was recommended from the planning commission for approval of the preliminary site and building plans.
Yeah, thank you, council members and mayor. We have a preliminary site and building plan in front of us this evening. For the Hazelton National Golf Course specifically for the Performance Center project. The site is highlighted in orange or outlined in orange on the slide shown on your screen. The Performance Center is really directly west of the driving range, so just kind of a local convention. So we're at the second step in the process here. There's a third and final step they have to go over just for the Performance Center itself. So it will be coming back in a very short period of time. Previous approvals, it was back in March of this year when you saw the first concept plan come through for the villas, the short course. The cutting course and the parking lot improvements. And the preliminary approval on that project was approved in May of this year. And then it was June when you saw the concept plan come through for the Performance Center that's being looked at this evening. The concept plan in June is shown on the exhibit here on this slide. The existing conditions of this site, it's over three hundred acres total in size. However, the area in question and where all the improvements are happening are really on the northwest side of the site and take up approximately thirteen acres. There is access currently on Hazelton Boulevard. The final that you just approved, there will be a modification of their main entrance. For vehicles to be oriented to the east side of Hazelton Boulevard to provide. Smoother movement into and out of the site on Hazelton Boulevard. The access for the service entries that are on the east and west sides of the main entrance road will remain in place and operate the same way they do today. And there's a clubhouse currently on site roughly fifty thousand square feet in size and that will remain as well. Just a couple images of the site if we need to refer back, but getting into what we're looking at this evening is. The preliminary site and building plan for the Performance Center building, which is approximately almost like a thousand square meters high. Almost white and tight of thirty three feet tall. The plan with the Performance Center highlighted in orange is shown on this screen. So again, the building itself is kind of sandwiched between the driving range that I'm circling with my cursor and then proposed. Villas and short course on the west side of the Performance Center. And will be oriented directly south of the new parking lot. Site plan. So this building will be for members only of the golf club. It will include seven indoor and outdoor hitting simulators. That will be oriented towards the driving range on site. They will also have indoor cutting and dripping areas within the building and then a small dining and lounge area with a patio.
So Liz, did you say that? That they'll hit from inside to the outside?
Yes. So it will have the indoor function, will have the digital simulation, but then also have garage doorways. That are oriented towards the driving range. So they will have capability to hit out into the driving range.
Well. Are they gonna net anything? Because those villas are right there.
Yeah, and that would be a good question for Hazelton on kind of those added pieces for security. Sure, they've thought about that closely in terms of how.
Where's the, where's the parking lot sitting there now? Is that where it's superimposed there on the top?
Yeah, on the north side.
And then what is that? Isn't that the, that's the actual driving range pads there, right? Next to it then? How's that gonna work?
In terms of what?
Well, if there's people on the driving range, you're almost. Somebody hits a bad ball, you'll hit, hit them right in the driving range.
I think maybe Hazelton can probably.
Okay. Well, you get through your presentation. We can look at that later.
Parking wise, they are meeting parking requirements on site. In fact, they're quite over the parking requirement or the combinations on site. But that will help supplement some of the larger events that they can hold on site when most happen. These images show the exterior materials that they plan to use on the Performance Center, which will be compared with the clubhouse and then the post villas. On site. So there will be a complete jump between all of the buildings. The lower images show kind of inspirational images of the functions of the space, such as the lounge. Bar eating area, the digital simulating base and then the hitting base that are oriented towards driving range. And then cutting area and additional heating space. These are the elevations of the proposed building. The top elevation is that south elevation, but the hitting base. Oriented to the driving range. So those are overhead doors that will open up for people that have been outdoors. And then the north elevation. So this will be facing the parking lot, will be the main entrance of the building. Side elevations on the bottom. And then the floor plan of the proposed Performance Center are just to show the layout of the space and the different uses within the building. So then these are the hitting base, the cutting green, the indoor and outdoor eating and lounge space. So in conclusion, there's really nothing that they haven't satisfied as a part of this preliminary. Where we left off there in concept. So we are asking to make the motion to adopt resolution number two thousand and forty four dash sixty two, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan. And then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Have you got any answer? Any other questions? Otherwise, we can invite Hazelton to answer your earlier questions.
Questions for Liz?
Liz, maybe you should go back to that aerial.
Yep.
I mean, it's not a public place, so doesn't, I guess, it's really not my deal. But I just don't know how sitting the way that's sitting that. There isn't a possibility of hitting somebody. And then if you add nets, is that legal? I don't know. I don't know any of those things.
I think probably it'd be best to have representatives from Hazelton come up and talk about that. I think in particular, you guys have the two, two tiers of the pads for the driving range.
Yes, Chris Zeeman was Zeeman Construction representing the applicant. So there's a, there's several aspects to answer the question. The orientation of the building in this planned view orients the shots down the. Quote unquote fairway of the driving range, if you will. Where the actual hitting mats are placed in the building. The angle of those shots really limit any kind of crossover of balls being hit. Over the turf outdoor tee area of the driving range. But by and large, most of the hitting that will be done outside in this facility. Would primarily be done when there, the weather outside doesn't allow the exterior turf hitting on the existing tee box to happen. So it'll be managed that way. But that building's been strategically oriented to ensure that if there were outdoor hitting and indoor hitting occurring at the same time. There's plenty of tee area in the outdoor hitting area that both can happen safely. And concurrently.
Is that driving area used in the winter time then too? No.
Okay. Just looks like. Everybody must be really good golfers. I've just seen enough golfers do a lot of funny things. Even good golfers, but like I said, it's not a public thing, so there's really nothing. You know, it's their deal. It's their people.
Don't put Nate out there.
Well, that's what I mean, but if you're, but if you're trying to learn. I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me. But it doesn't matter. All right, anyone else have any questions? Is that a no? I, I don't.
Share your thoughts with computers or whatever, but.
It still doesn't look, it looks goofy to me, but. So what happens if, I'm just gonna ask this because I don't know. What happens if for some reason they're having problems? Do you? Do we allow like nets out there? I mean, again, it's on private property, really not that big a deal, right?
Yeah, I mean, if we get complaints or anything like that, we'll have a.
But it wouldn't, we wouldn't get any. It's not, it's a private property.
I don't foresee that happening from an exterior.
I mean, I, like I said, I'm just asking if that's allowable.
I would think it would be.
Yeah, yeah, they could put nets and help. That's no different than a recreational field.
And staff is, we're all good with this. Okay. All right, anyone else have any questions? Not entertain a motion. Maybe.
Motion to approve the.
Twenty twenty four dash sixty two.
Thank you. My thing is so zipped in, I can't even see it. Twenty twenty four dash sixty two.
So a motion by council member Hubbard.
Second.
Second by council member Gra. And it is adopt resolution two thousand and twenty four dash sixty two approving preliminary site and building plan for Performance Center for Hazelton National Golf Course. Discussion. During none, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, thanks, gentlemen. All right, bills. Anyone got a question on a bill? Entertainer, entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by council member Gra.
I can.
Second by council member Hubbard to pay the bills. Discussion. At least we call roll.
I feel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard, yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
You want to?
Yes, all right. Other business, council member Gra.
Couple things. First, I'd say was able to experience Costco and Chaska opening. So if you're watching right now and you weren't where the Costco opened. Costco's open, but they're closed right now, so don't run out there right now. Because I think they close at eight o'clock. So don't go now. It's too late for that. So yeah, it was exciting just to see, you learn, people like seek these openings out and drive long ways just to get there. That was interesting because I wouldn't do that, but hey, remote work has endless possibilities now if you want to work remotely, I guess, and travel the country of Costco openings. Actually, the biggest takeaway, so I went back, I was there for the opening and I went back with my family eleven thirty. And you, you had to stock out a spot because it was full, like all the parking, there was a lot of parking there, it was full. Which is good, but I will also say like getting into the property and getting out of the property was not difficult. I know there was a lot of questions about the roundabout and the, you know, the access off forty one and the lanes and a lot of concerns. With that, now I fully recognize that I'm sure they're not, they have not sold every one of those villas and people aren't living in that space yet.
They've sold, they've sold most of them.
Good, well, even better. So to me, by observation, like.
They're, well, I mean, I can't remember, they're renters for.
They're rental, but they're almost all.
Okay. So yeah, so you, you probably put the most people this weekend that may ever, holidays, it gets dicey, it could be more people. But they may ever be there and truthfully forty one, it worked. So what did, you know, people got in and out. So because I've been asked that question a few times, like, well, how was the traffic? And, and I, the, the, the reason I know it was okay is because I had to think about it. Because trust me, if it wouldn't have been good, I would have remembered. But I was like, no, actually, like any normal roundabout, yeah, yeah, yielded a little bit. I mean, I'm a little conditioned with roundabouts right now because taking the roundabout across the one on one bridge right now at four, five o'clock when it's zero the access. There's a lot of cars. It was not even that bad. So that's exciting. I think that's, you know, I told people, I think the not, one of the number one questions I've been asked since being on this council is when is Costco opening? So now they'll ask me a different question. We'll see which rises to the top. Fire and ice, I'll just manage going first. See, I get to do all the fun things, right? Great event. I, you know, shout out to everyone who puts it on. I know our park staff works tons of hours. And it was hot and it looked like it could rain at any moment and it did rain, right? And so again, that doesn't happen and is not successful by accident. A lot of people, a lot of hard work goes into making that event as awesome it is. The fireworks were great. I, you know, much to the advice of many council members, we, our family went down there. Sometimes I watched it from my house. We were down there on Saturday. I got to sit in a dunk tank for the first experience. It was super fun. I'm not gonna lie, my first reaction was that's a lot closer than I envisioned people were throwing that ball at, which made it a lot easier. So yeah, I have good memories of my kids, you know, dunking their dad. I do notice that they refilled it after you were in. And I, they lifted the cooler up and there was ice cubes in the cooler. And I said, why, how was that? Why are those ice cubes in the cooler? But it was cold and refreshing. So that was fun. I thought that was a great event. It's just fun to see kind of that community. And I'll just mention, because we were talking with the historical, with the Cheska History Center about sometimes people don't take pictures of things like that really actually matter because you just assume it's gonna happen every year, right? And so that's like that, like, right? You know, that recollection of that many people in a space watching fireworks. And that venue is just cool, right? And, and guess what? I didn't take any pictures myself personally, right? So, so it's just interesting. So take pictures out there, community at these events. Lastly, I just wanted, you know, just thought of this a little bit. As my baseball season coaching in my son's plane is winding down. In particular with the city of Chaska, it has been a very challenging year for, to play baseball or softball for those that use it for softball. For lots of reasons with the rain and field maintenance and mowing with the lawn when it's not super wet. So just a shout out to the public works and the crews that maintain the fields because. It's, it's a challenge, right? There's puddles, they drag it, they try to dry it out. Because there's a lot of teams trying to get games in at the end. So, you know, I think it's, you know, it's probably the wettest we've ever had to mow fields and you can see the wet grass and. But in generally, they've been really good fields. And so, and again, that doesn't happen by accident. Teams from other towns, coaches from Chaska and teams show up and expect a playable field. And that's the expectation, but a lot of work goes into that. So just a acknowledgement of anyone who had hand in that. Because it's been a challenging year for outdoor sports in general. Um, I believe that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Taylor.
All right. Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll piggyback off of council member Bra. Fire and ice is wonderful. I think the weather worked out really well. It was hot, but I mean, the rain held off. I know they fireworks were like pushed up just a little bit, but they were still, you know, still dusk. It was still dark. The volunteer for the dunk tank as well. That was an experience. I was completely petrified of that, but I faced my fear and somewhat survived. So I think so. I do. But yeah, it was, it was interesting. I know the mayor got hit by a ball. By my son's friend.
I mean, like I was out.
So I think I was safer sitting behind the cage than other bystanders. At certain times, it wasn't the only wild pitch I saw during my time at least. But anyways, it was for a good cause and I'm, I'll be excited to hear how much money was raised during that time period. Yeah, fireworks were amazing. That same friend that hit the mayor. Had never seen like those, you know, the fireworks before and to, to get kind of a front row seat and see his face as it just first started was, you know. A wonder of a child, right? Just love, love witnessing that. But thank you to everybody that put that event on. It takes a lot of bodies and a lot of hard work. And everything was just wonderful down to the food vendors, like the lines weren't too long, to the music that was being played. I love the, the nineties band at the, on Saturday. It was living in my prime. So yeah, great event. Speaking of events, there are some upcoming events. There is River City Days. That's July twenty sixth through twenty eighth. The parade is back this year, which is exciting on that Sunday. And then Friends of the Library are holding their book sale. It coincides kind of the same timeframe. It's a little different. I wanted to make, mention it because their hours are slightly different than in the past. And I think they're sort of breaking away from tying it directly because River City Days is in, at Lions Park. And the Friends of the Library book sale is going to be inside the library this year. And it's going to be the Thursday, the twenty fifth from three to eight. And then Friday, ten to five and Saturday, ten to two thirty. There's no Sunday. There's no bag sale. They're gonna have more book sale events throughout the year. And so I think that that's kind of primarily where that's going with, with them. National Night Out is Tuesday, August first. And there's also a, there's, I gotta pull them up because I want to make sure I give the most accurate information. There are some open houses. One in particular I wanted to mention was eighty second street is having an, they're having, Carver County is having a public open house. And that is on Thursday, July twenty fifth. So before the book sale. You can go from four to six P M. It's at Lions Park Pavilion in Victoria. So it's an open house style. Talking about the design elements and the preliminary construction plans for the three areas of improvement project. And then there's a highway five improvement project, open house on Wednesday, August twenty first. From four thirty to six thirty at the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum. They will share the planned improvements and preliminary construction staging. And I know like usually when they have an open house, the arboretum, it doesn't state on here, but usually the general consensus is you do not need to pay to access that. You can tell the gatehouse that you are there for that and they will let you through. And that's it.
Just one correction. National Night Out is August sixth.
Oh, how come I had the first?
I don't know. The first is a Thursday. I've.
Sorry.
No, that's right. I just didn't want it to go.
That's good because I'll be here. When you said the first one, we'll be gone.
So yes, my bad.
All right, thanks. Kayla?
Yeah, some things, well, first of all, all the same things they just said about like Costco opening and. Well, I guess I'll say one more thing about the Costco opening. It was kind of fun to see, we talked about like. Community looks different these days and it was kind of fun. Everywhere I turned in Costco was a little bit annoying at times, but people were like chatting and I saw people hugging, like people were coming and seeing their friends. And just like how that kind of was. And it's like a different place. You don't think of it, but that sometimes gets a little bit. That sometimes gets a little bit lost these days and it was very much a thing there and even as, um. You know, Councilmember Bra had the first hot dog, you know, getting to know the two gentlemen that had the two first slices of pizza. And that was a whole thing and getting to meet them and, and they're gonna remember meeting us and it just was, you know. Kind of a cool but weird dynamic that we live in these days where that's somewhere we're building community just differently. So, um, I thought that was kind of fun. Um, but, uh, some other events that are coming up, one I really am excited about is Celebrate Walk by Chaska this Sunday from eleven to four. So, to, if you wanna see the tunnel, the Paseos, um. There'll be some programming and, uh, things like that. Come on down to see that, um, it's eleven to four on Sunday, um, and I think. The, you can drink a little bit in certain areas, right?
First, up to sixty, um, one and then walnut to pine, that kind of that area.
So.
There's an ounce limit though, there's an ounce limit though.
Yes. But sixty one ounces. But still fun, um, so come down for that, this Sunday, eleven to four. Yes.
Is there?
Eleven to two, I think the website or the Facebook says four, so I'm sure I got that. Um, but there's specials, so size is gonna have something, Zen Den is doing, um. Demos and then I think they were gonna do something on their lawn, um, the History Center is gonna have historic tours. Red Bench will have some stuff, um, and then you can learn about the Paseos and. The walkable, walkability and bikeability of Chaska, so there's lots going on, um. All over, like on both sides of forty one and then up and down the Paseos from fifth to second.
So it's eleven to two or eleven to four?
What?
Eleven to two?
It's eleven to two.
Uh, is there like, uh, gonna be an official ribbon cutting of the tunnel, or are they gonna do anything like that?
That is the plan and I was gonna mention that tonight, that is. We wanted to make sure we were gonna be able to get the tunnel open first, and I did confirm today that we will have the tunnel open. Um, it will have to be closed later on when we do put those guardrails in.
She's gonna say and said.
But.
When are the guardrails coming?
Uh, early August. But temporarily, they'll be able to move the fencing and such so that we can allow that to be open. So the ribbon cutting would be right at eleven, so if you all are able to make it, we'd love to have you.
Where?
Uh, we'll be on, on the size side.
Okay, thanks. It is eleven to two, I just can't read military time, I forgot that my Facebook military time, so it's not fourteen hundred and that's four. Um, so yeah, that's very exciting, thanks for having us, um, what else did I have? Uh, Pictick with Police is this Thursday at five at Veterans Park. Um, that's always a great time and I see they added a drone demo, so that's gonna be cool. Um, and then Bark in the Park at the Farmer's Market is July twenty fourth. And, uh, that's at Fireman's Park, that's always a fun event for your pups and the farmer market, so you could do both. Um, Coffee with a Cop is this Wednesday at nine A M at McDonald's. Um, there's a pop up splash pad tomorrow at eleven at Sunset Park, which is always really fun with the fire department, they. Do that and it's great, and then probably the most exciting thing that's gonna happen this month is Highway forty one opening back up. Hopefully still July twenty second at five.
Yes.
Yes, amazing, nice, so, um, lots of like fun things to do in the next few weeks.
Get the old truck again?
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, we have, so, lots to do downtown, like, and then out and about, so. That's it.
Thank you, Lisa.
I don't have anything else.
Hey. Kristoff. Liz.
I just wanted to point out, I agree with Congressman Hatfield about the community building at places like Costco. And I think back to, if any of you remember when Target opened up back in two thousand two. And the same thing happened. Everybody was like wandering the place and like saying hi to each other, and I mean, it was that same sort of feeling there. The second thing in Costco is, uh, the, and we talked about it today is. Those roundabouts work really nice, especially when you're used to going to Eden Prairie and seeing the. Stuff that happens there, um, I too had plenty of people. Uh, tell me that, uh, they thought we were nuts for putting that in there, that it would never work. And I thought it was so cool, I, I thought it was so cool driving out of that place when it was completely packed. And it was just like, hmm, just right on and, and out, so.
I can tell you, I worked next to that Costco in Eden Prairie on Friday, it's still to this day, not easy to take a left turn out of that property.
Yeah.
Even with the stoplight, not on the road, you sit there. Yeah, it's, oh, so hopefully we help Eden Prairie out too, because I think that was the hope of Costco is to. Spread some of that.
People.
People between buildings, so.
Yeah, the only other thing I had is just a reminder that at River City Days on Friday and Saturday, we're gonna have our booth. Uh, so Elise got out the sign up sheet today to get signed up for that, that's it.
All right, uh. Got a bunch of things, tomorrow's the fishing with friends, they bring the veterans in from the veterans home. Out at, uh, I think it's called Horts Point, does that sound right? Uh, it's really a cool event, um, they, they get, they go, they go out fishing. And then the Flags of Honor, uh, hamburgers and brought some hot dogs or whatever and. And feed all the veterans and get an opportunity to do that social network, or that networking. Um, that they don't always get to do with their, uh, veterans friends, so. And I heard this year that there's, they have so many that they're gonna go on two different flights, so I don't know, last. I know last year there was a bunch coming, but then one home got COVID or something, so, you know, you know, you, you just never know. Um, but it's a fun event, if you got time to go out there, it's like probably between eleven and two. Um, I think the, the, they start having some. Uh, people talking around eleven thirty or something, eleven thirty, twelve, so. Uh, good time, uh, National Night Out, we talked. Um, I just wanna mention another business that's gonna be opening soon is. It's called, uh, Rogue Forty One, it's a speakeasy over by, um, Red Bench Bakery's.
Rouge, I found out.
Ru, is it rouge?
Rouge, does it mean something, Krista told me, it means red in French?
Yeah.
Oh.
Or something, yep, so I thought it was rogue too.
I, I thought it was rogue, but that's. I anyways, I got the tour of it on Sunday, it is really cool and. It's, it's, it's got red, red lighting in there, so that must, that must be what, what it needs, so.
His biggest challenge right now is getting the Department of Health to come and give him his final inspection. Um, he's being told it's a month out, so. He gave me the contact, I'm gonna try to. Call and see if we can help out for that.
But that, that, I think that that's another thing, I mean, I think it's great with the. With that opening and then the, you know, the, the tunnel just opening. And, and then hopefully by fall, the rest of the trail, I don't know, is the rest of the trail gonna make it this year, I mean, no.
Yeah.
They will, it's.
That's the plan.
We haven't been it yet. Right?
Uh, I think it's out for bed right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so anyways, uh, that'll be a, a, another nice, um. Thing to add downtown, bring some people down. Um, he's, he told me that he's already got multiple people wanting private parties. So he's gonna have to close it out for private parties, so, uh, that's cool that there's that kind of. Uh, people want it already, so. Uh. Already been mentioned, but, you know, Highway forty one opening the twenty second, um. Which is perfect, because I don't, I don't even know, do they have the road done, anybody, no, I don't see anybody working there, they don't. They don't seem to be going in this end. They gotta re-shoulder the road.
Yeah, they have to re-shoulder the road, most of the stuff that they were doing down on the other end got done. Um.
So the railroad's done already?
They were supposed to do it this last weekend and I think they did.
Friday, they were gonna go in and do it, so I believe.
They just did it in a day?
No, it was like three days.
Yeah, uh, they started Friday, because the one business asshole plant closed on Friday to allow it to happen.
Okay. All right, I saw that in there, I didn't understand what that, okay, that makes more sense, but anyways, um. I, I'm happy that, you know, we probably only ended up maybe a week lost. In, in, in the, in the big picture of things, a week longer than, but it's sure better than. Three to five, whatever, we were here and early on, so anyways, um, happy to see that happening. Um. Uh, I had River City Days that we have the booth, uh, what are we, just putting up, up, up on our building program? And what was the other thing?
Uh, building program, uh, the trail, the, um.
City Square Park.
Okay, so we got.
Kind of what we did for Taste of Chaska.
Okay. All right, and then, yep, the parade's back, does anybody know, it's at one o'clock? We seen the time?
Facebook.
Okay, but, uh, but the parade will still be in the same area. So basically leaving the Cordell's parking lot, coming out, going around Autumn, uh. Auburn Manor.
One o'clock.
Auburn Manor and then, and then loop back on.
And it.
Second Street, Second Street to the Cordell's.
One thing to mention too is that busing will be provided from the parade route back to Lions Park, so I think that's really. Since it's in the different area, that's a good thing to mention.
Um, we talked a lot about fire and ice and I mean, there, there was not a lot to add, I mean, I still think the fireworks. There is nothing any better, I actually talked to the, to the Mall Rats afterwards a little bit and he said. He's, he stood there and looked at me, he said those fireworks were like. I just, he just stood there for a minute and I said, the bomb, he goes, that's it, they were the bomb, so anyways, uh. You know, it's, it's, it's fun talking to different people from, you know, that aren't always here every year or no longer, he was. He was really stoked about it, he thought that was, they were awesome, but anyways, I, what I do wanna talk about out of that is. You know, Saturday night, we were sitting there with pending weather and I thought it was amazing, everybody. Staff wise came together to say, you know, how, how are we gonna handle this, what are we gonna do? And, and Matt was able to get some higher tech level than our apps for the phone. To know that we could keep pushing it back and, and the other thing was is the Mall Rats to go up there and say, hey, we gotta quit at nine. Uh, I know you can go to nine fifteen, now you can go to nine thirty, they were so accommodating, they, I mean. They, they were unbelievable how. Accommodating they were and all they wanted to do was play, so. I, I just wanna give them kudos because that weather was so, and then, you know, it was supposed to hit us at nine o'clock and wanted to get it to us midnight. Somehow, all of a sudden, as, as fast as it was going, I didn't look after it, didn't get here, but that, that was, um. Crazy, but I, I just wanna talk about that, I mean, that, you know, Marshall was there, Matt was there. Um, Aaron and myself and a number of other ones, uh, Sid, we all sat and talked about, you know. How, how are we gonna handle this, you know, what are, what are we gonna do, you know, we had to look for. You know, the safety of the band and all of the people and, you know, in case something did, I mean. I mean, look at St. Louis Park, they had winds tore down half the trees and somebody out west had. Had baseball sized hail, so that, I mean. But anyways, I just wanna talk about the cooperation there, so. Um, Athletic Park, uh, doesn't look like the turf's gonna make it. We got a final turn determination, but I think we're there, I don't think.
I think it's done.
I don't think it's gonna make it, I mean, not that the park. Would have been playable this year, because they start playoffs, you know, right away, the first part of, end of, actually the end of July, first part and. You know, pretty much done by first week of August, so. Matter of what, I don't think we'd have been ready, because there has to be a lot of extra electrical work down there, is what I heard.
Yeah, cuz, uh, unlike some of the other floods that we've had where the water didn't hit the ceiling of the first floor, this one did. So it got into some of the electricals, like lights and all that kinda stuff, so definitely more. Uh, I don't wanna call damage, I mean, it's, it's all repairable stuff, um, it's just more work. Um, we, we will submit this stuff through FEMA, the county did, uh, qualify. Uh, with the amount of damage, uh, within the county to be able to declare, make a. Natural, a declaration, so, uh, we will get. Money back to, to make some of these repairs and stuff, so.
Okay. Uh, oh, I do have one thing here I missed, uh, you know, we talked, talking about the fireworks, I had a young man come up to me, a just young boy. And, and mom probably put him up to it, but he came up to me and he said. Thank you for the fireworks and that just kind of makes the weekend, you know, and somebody like that, you know, they recognize it, so. So I thought that was pretty cool, uh, USAM is really coming up fast, it's August twelfth through the eighteenth. So it's right around the corner, I, we don't really have anything to do with that, right?
We have quite a bit.
I mean.
Yeah, it looks really nice, yeah.
I mean, at the town course we do, but yeah, not, I mean, keep in mind when it's at the town course, the. It, the, the attendance is pretty sparse, um, now that could change if. Charlie Woods ends up making the cut to, to actually come here. Uh, then you could see more people, uh, actually show up.
Tired, Ope.
And everybody else, so, um, I actually think that'd be pretty cool, uh, if that happened, but, uh, um. So that's sort of the contingency at this point is, does he make the cut or doesn't he? Uh, it sort of changes it.
So how open is that to the public?
Very open, so like at the, at the town course, I mean, you'll just be able to go out there.
Walk up, walk her up.
And they don't have the ropes like you see it, I mean, they have some roping, but very, uh, very few areas that are like completely roped off. Um, I mean, I remember the last time it was here, you know, it was great going down on eighteen hillside. And just watching these guys coming in, uh, as they're playing, I mean, it's, it, it was pretty cool.
Because Derek mentioned something about the clubhouse is closed, the only.
Yeah, the clubhouse will be closed because we have to use that as a, a location as basically office area for the, uh, USGA.
Okay, but he said even the pro shop wasn't open.
Correct.
Oh.
Yep.
I, I would think that that would be part of the, I mean, there's your sales for people that are there, but I guess we don't. So we don't do very good money wise on this.
Although, one thing I will say is that, uh, Hazelteen, I mean, they don't. They don't make a lot of money on this event either, but, uh, the one thing they have said is that any proceeds that they make, they're gonna be putting. Uh, all of it back into the Loop, uh, golf course. So.
Oh, the town course or the?
Hazel, Hazelteen is gonna be putting it into the Loop.
The town course is.
No, it's too bad they can't have like racks out or something, some sort of. Opportunity for sales.
Yeah, clubhouse sales.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you, you'll see when it gets here, it, that's just when people go out to town course. It's, most of them are families, uh, most of its families are just coming out to watch their kids, uh, kids play. Um. It's just, it's not like the, it gets a little bit more like the, the other tournaments when you get into Saturday, Sunday over at Hazelteen. Uh, there'll be more groups, uh, that are over there, but it's, it's, uh, it's a different. Atmosphere experience to it.
All right, um, lastly, meetings, uh, we have a fifth Monday this month, there is no meetings still, so. Luckily, we get a week off, uh, our next meeting is August fifth and then, uh, August nineteenth, so. Still back on the first and third, um, we have a short economic development meeting, uh, immediately following this one. Um, and that's.
Quick comment I wanted to make about fire and ice, so we had sixteen people from San Francisco in the Bonds Field.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
How many teams is that?
Uh, four.
Wow.
Yeah, and the comment that, there's one guy that's come from the very beginning in two thousand sixteen Ford. And now he's started taking it upon himself that he tries to bring out a few groups of curlers every year to this event because. And he tries to get younger curlers, because he's just like, if they go to this event and play here, they will be hooked. With curling for life, so I, I thought that's a, a cool comment, he, he just loves our facility, so.
Wow, it's awesome, I mean, we have, it's, you know, sometimes you. Wow, it's awesome. I mean, we have, it's, you know, sometimes you take those things that we have right here sold for granted. You don't realize it, take it start really talking to people from other, you know, out of the area to say, wow, this is a nice place, so.
It was great to see how busy Crooked Plant was as well. They were so busy.
Yeah, they said, they were telling me Friday was like, they couldn't keep up.
Yeah, they, they were very busy.
Yeah.
I didn't even, I didn't even make an attempt to.
I walked in there and it was like a zoo.
Yeah.
They were overwhelmed, but in a good way.
In a good way.
They were watching me.
Yes.
Can I add one thing before we go?
Absolutely.
Candidate filings open July thirtieth.
Thanks.
So, uh, there's two council members and the mayor up for the city specifically, those open July thirtieth and go till the thirteenth. So if you wanna have this really fun job, you can um, put your name in the hat for that and school district, uh, school board as well, same filing period.
When, when's the primary for?
It's, it's usually the same day that we close, so thirteenth, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I. So yeah, we're on the primary.
Yeah.
So both commissioner races would have a. In our area, while the two that are up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so, cause they each have three candidates at this point, plus somebody's dropped out that I don't know about. So. All right, uh, that's all I got. Last call, I think we all hit that. All right, motion adjourned. Motion by council member Hubbard. Second, second by council member Gra, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Thanks for joining us, and we're gonna go right into an EDA meeting. So with that, uh, we'll call the meeting to order at nine thirteen. Um, Elise, will you call roll?
Sure, Hatfield.
Here.
Missure Hubbard.
Here.
Missure Wong.
Missure Gra.
Here.
President Minshew.
Kristoff, I forgot, I was gonna mention, you should have talked about yours time in uh. In the dunk tank.
I have to say about that is if all the kids that were dunking may go out and play for, play ball for Chaska, the other towns around here better watch out.
They were very accurate too, huh?
Sorry, wrong meeting, but. All right, uh, next is item three, adopting the agenda. Is there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion by uh Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard. Uh, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, kinda weak. Uh, next is item four, approve previous meeting minutes, and that's EDA meeting minutes from uh. Seven, one of twenty twenty four. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hubbard, second, second by Commissioner Gra, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next we're up to discussion item, uh, approves second. Downtown Business Improvement Program Loan Application from Chaska Comics.
Uh, Mr. President and Commissioners, I'm gonna turn this over to, yeah, Mr. President, can I turn this over to Elise?
Listening Commissioners, uh, as you may recall, last summer. The modifications to the business or the um storefront improvement loan program, which we're now calling the downtown building improvement program. Um, also at about that time, you saw a loan application come through for two ten Chestnut Street. And if you've been down there, you saw the changes that occurred. They, they took the stucco off the front of the building, replaced all the windows. Looks like a completely different building. It was something that um, that property owner has been contemplating and something that. Uh, with the changes that you all made with the storefront improvement program was to allow the. Rear entrances or the, the backsides of the buildings um to have improvements made. So what this property owner now is proposing to do is take off. Essentially the last four hundred square feet of their building, which essentially abuts the brand new Passao. And what they plan to do is make that space into an outdoor patio for their tenants. It wouldn't be publicly accessible, but. Really, the idea is to have that interaction with Passao glor, so it is. Um, this sort of project is something that we have been talking about and really hoping that would happen with um. You know, the Passao and the activation by property owners. So last summer, um. The EDA provided that property owner with a thirty five thousand dollar loan at a one to one match. So the property owner at that time brought in additional thirty five thousand. Um, the, the loan program allows us to provide up to sixty thousand dollars total per property. So the property owner is requesting the remaining twenty five thousand dollars to do this project. He is bringing twenty five thousand dollars plus to the table, because it will cost more than that. Um. The same sort of terms apply as it would be for um the first phase, so. Um, twelve and a half thousand dollars of that would be in a low interest loan for a term of ten years. And then the other half would be a deferred forgivable loan, um, where ten percent of that loan is forgiven. Every year for up to ten years. Uh, so if, if that property owner would go to sell the building before the end of the ten years. Whatever that difference is between now and when he sells, that portion would be forgiven and then um, the remaining. Portion would become due, so.
Any portion would be what?
Would become due at the time of sale. Uh, so as we've uh looked at this project, it's consistent with all of our program guidelines. It's gone through the Heritage Preservation Commission as well. They are working with our um, building inspections department. Um, as they work through final plans, so staff is recommending the EDA approve the loan.
I don't have any questions. I just am really excited to see this come in front of us, and I think. Um, I always say this, we're really lucky. We have some amazing business and property owners in downtown and um, you know, there's. To some extent, a limit on what we can do to help the vibrancy. It has to kinda be, there has to be buy-in from those. Business owners and property owners. There has to be things people wanna go to. Um, so certainly, I. I'm really proud of all the effort we've put in to make it really beautiful and walkable and to offer programs like these. And it's just really nice to see property and business owners um, recognize that investment and make their own investments, and I think this is really exciting. To see, and I, I just am really grateful for property owners and business owners in downtown that are taking advantage of these programs and. Thank you to staff for helping make these programs, but um, I'm just excited to see this. The building does look beautiful and this will even better, so.
I have a couple of questions. Do they have an end user? And, uh, go ahead.
Sorry, uh, no, they do not. They are currently looking for a tenant. Right now, their tenant is Mindot and Mindot will. Um, once the forty one project is all complete, they will move out, so they are looking for a user.
I mean, how much longer does, does Mindot stay around?
I don't know how the lease goes.
Yeah.
I bet you through the end of the year.
And, oh, I suppose they got a lease, so they can't, if they get a user, they can't really get them out either. Uh, the other question I have is, has the step issue there been squared away?
We are working through that with them, um. They have um essentially poured where that new ramp will go. So for the rest of the council members, there was a ramp in the, the rear that had to be taken off to get the new Passao in. Um, and it has been essentially replaced. Last time I was out there last week sometime, it wasn't completely done. But it won't be completely done until we know the final plans here, so that it can match up. So that will be essentially, because there has to be access. Um, out onto the Passao as a secondary access from a fire perspective, um, that will be where that access point is.
Well, sir, wasn't there other issues about things not fitting and stuff? Or is that all?
We are working through that with it.
Yeah, it was some of the stuff that actually had to be welded out on site.
It was a manufacturing thing.
Yep, and so, one, you know, the work that they're gonna have to do is to actually go out and actually, you know. Buff it down, repowder it, repaint it, all, everything, uh, do it onsite.
They can do it all onsite, okay. I, I know that gentleman was pretty upset about what was going on there, but I know you guys.
Yeah, my apologies. I was talking about the ramp and not the stair.
No, that's right.
Yeah.
And then, um, lastly, as long as we're talking about business now, I heard that, that is a coffee shop going back into Dunn Brothers? They're currently working on, you guys aware of that?
There's work being done in there. Every time we walk by, there are folks working in there.
I was told.
We've heard rumors that it will be a coffee shop.
So I know a person that's leasing the upstairs and he says it's a coffee shop.
That's what we've heard.
That's what we've heard, but we haven't heard anything from.
But they don't, they haven't got any building permits or anything like that, that would.
They have building permits.
Before. Yep.
And uh, um, the owner of the property has been in contact with Julie and myself just about how to make. You know, the parking and that hasn't come before. Is there some steps? But um, that need to happen before, that would come before the council potentially. But about parking and how to make that more parkable, so that it's maybe more attractive for businesses down there, so. They're definitely motivated and working on things and excited to be a part of downtown. They've come to downtown business alliance meetings, so.
Okay. Well, that's cool. I, I just, I, I agree, uh, whoever was stating that about, you know, people taking. Um, taking what's being offered to them about fixing their buildings up, front and back now. I mean, I think that that's important. Now that they see what's, what's there, that, you know, that there is that option about, you know, doing both sides of the buildings and. But just fixing them up, and I think. It's kinda like a lot of things. Once you start seeing some things happen, it just builds and keeps going, and that's what I hope, uh. You know, some, I saw the pizza and pasta building's been sold. I don't know what the intention is there. And uh, I know there's, you know, there's a number of vacant buildings around, so I'm excited to see that. Hopefully, they become some sort of a small business, retail type business, just to make people come on down and walk around. It gives you more options. Than just staying in one space, so. Excited. So, all right, uh, did we already vote on that?
No.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I'm way off. Uh, did we get a motion?
Nope.
All right, so I, I, um, I would need a motion and a second for the approval of the downtown. Second Downtown Business Improvement Program Loan Application. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Gra.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hatfield, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Carries. Now, is there any other business? No, screw it, yeah. Anyone else got anything?
I was just noticing that uh, Andy Mooney put out that uh. Rouge Forty One is gonna have samples of their cocktails and food.
That's right.
At the event on Sunday.
Sunday, that's right, that's what.
Yep.
That's why he was telling me he's doing a Sunday. I thought, man, that's odd.
Yeah, no, it's during that event.
Uh, he's got an interesting, some other foodie, Tori, honestly, I don't even know what it is.
He had me taste test something last week that was like a lemon meringue sort of thing, and it was delicious.
All, all this stuff is homemade desserts and.
It's like fancy, it's like cocktails tuna tartare and olivata, whatever that is.
Yeah, see, I don't know what some of that stuff is. Uh, and he was rattling off those things to me on Sunday when I was there, and I'm going. Oh, okay, but I, like I said, I, I have a feeling it's gonna be. Everything he's touched has been pretty good, so. All right, anything else? Otherwise, we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Hatfield. Second by Commissioner Hubbard, in all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post that sign.